Meeting to order and I'll ask Steve to do a roll call.
Sure, I'm just gonna go as I see them. Mr. Schulman?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Mancini?
Here.
And Mr. Cantor?
Here.
And I'll try to raise Nate while you guys are talking.
Okay. Actually, Steve, I'm gonna ask you to handle the introduction. Review and action on new applications. A is 1-20M Merit Station Norwalk LLC. 67, 69, 79, 87, 111, 117, 129, 135, 155, 156, and 201 Glover Avenue and 2 Oakwood Avenue. Proposed change to the zoning map from AAA residence, business two-zone and executive office to entirely executive office. Steve, you want to give a brief introduction to that?
Certainly. So this is the second meeting that the commission has had regarding this application. As you know, it's a large application in scope, over 16 acres in land area, proposed over 1,300 residential units. It comprises the west side, the west side and the northern half, basically, of Glover Avenue, where the applicant has proposed development and under construction development on the east side of Glover Avenue known as the curb. The commission, you know, at the end of the last meeting, which I think was about two weeks ago, maybe a little more now, had decided to go ahead and have a peer review team, which we have our on-call folks at DeCarlo and Dahl, which are joining us tonight. And I sent out a report this afternoon. Hopefully you had a chance at least breeze through it. And we did send that over to the applicant as well, just to give you a sense of some of the items that they were thinking about in terms of the overall design, the composition of it, the geography of it, and other things that they can look at to improve it going forward. And we provided you a little bit of information on some of the larger DOT infrastructure projects that are contemplated in there. And will have a profound impact, not only on the proposed development, but on the area as a whole. As you know, the Merritt Parkway, you know, pre-COVID, going towards the city in the morning was a, you know, off in a parking lot. And then going the opposite way in the afternoon is a parking lot. While the intersections and interchanges from Glover Avenue up to Griss Mill are really challenging and really congested for their own reasons. So there's a lot of outside issues to consider as part of this project. So that's some of the ideas and thoughts that the commission reads to consider before they, you know, get too far and make too many steps into this application. I don't know if you would, you have any questions or you want to hear from the DeCarlo and Dahl team first to provide the report? Or, I mean, that might be one way to go. And then the applicant, I'm sure, has items that they would like to respond to based off of questions and issues that came up at the last meeting. And they may also want to respond to some of the DeCarlo and Dahl comments if they've had a chance to digest anything yet. I was thinking we might need to do one follow-up meeting before we set the public hearing to really make sure we're at the stage where things are ready to go. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chin.
Okay, thank you. Why don't I turn it over to Bob and Alan to begin to talk about the report? I had an opportunity to review it earlier, but I did not have the time to go in-depth as I received it only a couple of hours before the meeting.
Okay. Would you like me to start?
Yeah, and Bob?
I'm looking you in the eye.
Please introduce yourself and Alan.
Okay, I'm Robert Griswitz from the consulting firm DeCarlo and Dahl, your peer reviewers. With me is Alan Platus of the Yale Architecture School and Urban Design Workshop associated with Yale. And he has about 20 other credentials. If I had the time, if I had the memory, I would go into those. We could go very briefly, and I don't know if if we want to bring up the report as a screen share. If you want to do that, Steve, or it's your call. In any case, just going through things somewhat in order. We took as an area of study, this is on page four, if you have the report, the area between Route 7, Griss Mill, Main Avenue, and the Merritt Parkway. And this is something-
I'm sorry to interrupt. It probably would make sense if you can do the screen share while you're talking. We can then see what you're talking about.
I'll pull it up. Just give me-
Thank you.
I'll catch up to you.
Thank you. In any case, so as Steve gets it up. So on page four, we have a graphic that is aerial view of the area and shows the primary projects, not every building, but the primary projects that are part of the area, including North 7. You're familiar with them all. Merritt 7, the 801 Main, 45 Glover, which I understand has a local, whatever, local name that I wasn't familiar with. Merritt on the River, Merritt River Apartments, One Glover, the curb, and Seer Hill, which being the condominium, largely condominium area to the west. That is a logical study area. Both the, we had a very good Zoom meeting with the applicant and they independently indicated that that was a logical area to consider the neighborhood for this whole project, which is a little bit relevant later. You're also no doubt familiar with the topography, but basically, we're dealing with Glover Avenue as a low spot. Seer Hill as a high spot. Glover Avenue, the southern portion up until what we call the S-curve, just south of the curb, is pretty level, rises very gradually south to north. And then at the curb, it starts running. And I'd say very gradually, I think we have the numbers here, maybe 15 feet or so. Might be off on that, 90 to 110. So maybe 20, 20 feet in elevation in, do we have the distance here? It's a better, probably a half mile. And then the last third of Glover rises, I believe, 65 feet. Significant thing being that Glover is the lowest, that the portion, that it divides itself topographically into two distinct areas that, south and north, that the area to the west is not liable to be developed for both topography and land ownership reasons. This, again, was something that the applicant shared with us. Their observations, I believe they're correct. There is one small parcel, which Steve may want to identify because I can't call it, but it's right about where the E is on Glover or the R. There's one little niche out that's not gonna help us. Yeah, now we're at the beginning. Well, anyhow, if you look at the boundaries that you're being asked to rezone, there is one property at the southern end of the perimeter that appears to eat into it coming off, and I forget the name of the road that's going up the hill there, that you may want to consider because it's logical continuation of the area that you are being asked to rezone. But I think that that's a pretty good summary of that. So what the applicant has picked an area that's in the center of this neighborhood to rezone. It's topographically appropriate. That is, it's developable in a way that the properties surrounding it are not. And as we say later on, it's a logical center. On page six. Six, there we go, page six. It's dull, but it's a chart. And here is just an idea, if you're looking at this whole study area, how much area is in the study area? So you might say this is the center of your neighborhood. How much building area and how much is office space? How much is residential? How much is proposed to be retail? Right now, there is no retail of any significance that we can find in the area. So you've got an area that with North 7 will have 5.3 million square feet, of which 2.4 billion is existing office space. And I would guess about half, it's probably about doubling the total residential count. We don't have a good feeling on Seer Hill because it's very hard to count all the little condo units. But our methodology was primarily to go to vision appraisal and then fall back on Google Earth when it wasn't possible to figure something out from vision appraisal. So these are pretty accurate, except maybe for Seer Hill. But it certainly gives you an idea. You've got about 5.3 million total square feet if North 7 is built. Just over half of that, just a little less than half, a little over half of that will be residential. Little less than half is everything else, but basically office and retail. If you go to this, Alan, I don't know if you want to, since a lot of this was your study, but on page seven, which the big graphic is, this is the new train station. I assume you've seen it, but if you haven't seen it, it's got a little bridge that comes over from one of the plazas of Merritt 7 and then has an elevator and stair to come down to Glover. So it will be the first link across the train tracks, which is a big step, but it's one small step. It's not a major bridge. It's not that grand connection that everybody would hope. But it is something, and that's a start. You want to step in, Alan, or we can do the overview and then you can come back? And Alan, your speech is not on. Your mic is, okay. So Alan may come out and go in. It's, we had this problem before. So I'll keep going and he'll figure out how to get a the portion of this. But the, this project is called a transit-oriented development. It does have transit in that there is a train track here. There is a station. There is bus service on Glover and for the couple of, two or so hours that I walked around the neighborhood there, which was midday, and there were several buses, so that's something. But it's still largely a, an auto-oriented neighborhood. That's not a reflection on the applicant. It's all in the service that is currently offered on the line here. I don't know how many trains a day, but again, in several hours there, a couple hours at midday, there weren't any trains. There were several buses.
And I'm on now.
Go for it.
I was just gonna point out an obvious fact, which I'm sure you all know well, but is worth reiterating at this point. The site is severely attenuated in the north-south direction by the topography, the river, the hill, and then all the infrastructure, the train and the principal roads follow that north-south direction. It's important because it really puts pressure on east-west connections and it makes almost impossible any idea of instituting, at this point, a normal block structure. So you've got high-density uses that are really severely constrained in the north-south direction. And it's so obvious, we tend to ignore it. And I say this in a partial defense of the applicant because the possibilities for accessing the existing buildings and any new buildings are really limited.
And-
Go on, Bob.
Oh, okay, thank you. Just like the TV anchors, you gotta. Thank you, Alan, reporting from New Haven. It's Bob reporting from New Haven. So if you go to page eight, which doesn't have a number, I'm sorry. God knows where it went. Two, and again, we would really encourage you. We apologize for the fact that this didn't get out to you in time for you to all absorb and marvel over the beautiful language that we used. But please, please do take it in at your nearest opportunity. You're seeing, of course, what we all see now on the tracks at the station with Merritt 7. So you've got an impenetrable track border, followed by a fence, followed by the ramparts of Merritt 7. Getting, while the office portion of this study area is part of this neighborhood, getting it to interact with this neighborhood is going to be a real challenge for many years to come. But we have two observations. So if you see something emboldened in the report, because we're going through this very quickly and rather than putting all the recommendations at the end, they're in with the sections. We're saying that North 7's building typology, okay, so that's building on podium, massing access, and architectural treatment. So it's, say that it's important that what is done in North 7 not continue to reproduce the performance and character of the autonomous, auto-oriented sealed box development prevalent in its surroundings. So it should be different, or appear to be different, or particularly functionally be different to a person walking along the street. And second, that North 7 has the opportunity and the responsibility to provide a unifying, active pedestrian-oriented center to this area. So this is the center of your neighborhood. Whether, I hate to say whether you like it or not, this is the center of your neighborhood. If you act positively, it will be an active center. If you're passive, it could be just like Merritt 7. Let's go on to the urban design considerations on page nine. And maybe I'll just start and then let Alan pull in because, again, here is your Merritt 7, just as seeing that typical auto entrance with the pedestrian at best pushed to the side. And I'm sure you've all been there and you say, I wonder if I could walk up that and if I could walk up that or down that, would I get to any place that I would be welcome? That's what you don't want. On the other hand, you have a typical Merritt 7 plaza level. And once you get up there, it's absolutely wonderful, as you well know. And if it were possible at some time in the future to make a plaza of that sort that bridged the tracks and came down in some graceful way on the edge of Glover, it would be a major positive addition. We're not saying that's part of this project or could be because that's, you know, can you work with Merritt 7? Who knows? But Alan, would you like to?
Well, to put it simply, if I am able, the key to the new development is clearly Glover Avenue, which mostly feels and performs currently like an access road. And I think the applicant's goal is to make that more of a local main street with all that implies in terms of an attractive pedestrian-oriented environment that's lively in their terms, 18.7, allowing for a minimum of sleeping hours. And we totally agree with their goals. And all our recommendations have been advanced in the spirit of making those as clear and realizable as possible. And for all the reasons we've already said, we recognize that it's a considerable challenge. As Bob points out, Merritt 7, which is the big, along with 45 Glover are the big neighbors currently. And they pretty much turn their backs on Glover Avenue. So the opportunity that we described and the applicant has described is to use the new development to turn Glover from a backdoor condition into a front door condition for the new residents.
Okay, go to page 10. And so to give, we have a verbal description here of the character of the streetscape and the character of the station square. That, the verbal description is, we think what you want. These illustrations are not your project, but pulled from comparable projects in other states that have something of interest. And I think if you look at the upper picture, and these are renderings, by the way, so this is not real, although the first one looks rather real. You get an idea of, yes, you have continuous street of varied frontages. All of them look like they're welcoming you in, something interesting to look at, maybe something you want to go into. You have substantial landscaping. You have amenities, benches. Alan mentions bike racks and many of the things that you have in other design standards that we've used to assess past projects. But we would need to come up, or we would suggest you would want to have design standards for this project. Below that, there is a very interesting little public square, probably comparable in scale to the station square that's being proposed by the applicant just because at this stage, the applicant's graphics are diagrammatic and sometimes having something that looks a little more like, oh, yes, I understand. That's a tree. You walk under the tree. You walk between the trees and you go to interesting places. That's what you want. And I think that's where everybody hopefully wants to go with this. We're seeing the station square as one end of a continuous, active street with the area, you may not even know that it's called Raccoon Stream. Or if you do, you get bonus points. But that's the little piece of water that crosses Glover, Glover, rather, as you go around the S-curve. But it is the built environment. It's the buildings. It's the landscaping. It's all of those appointments that are going to make this interesting. You can, I know the applicant has plans for having active programming, and that's very good. And in fair weather, that will amplify the attractiveness of the street. But believe it or not, not all of our weather is fair weather and there isn't always planning, planned activities. And so you have to plan for an actual built environment that works without those. And then those become a bonus. You go to the next page, page 11. So what we found interesting here was that, as we said with the type topography, I'm sorry, the topography, there's kind of a natural break, which the applicant's proposal implicitly recognizes in Glover, below the Raccoon and above the Raccoon, if you will. And we think that below the Raccoon is the area that's the really more active area. And above it, the curb sets up a different pattern, which is probably not going to be your pedestrian-intensive area and probably doesn't want to be, I would say, if you walk it, given everything in this area. It just seems like south of Raccoon, let's say, So Row. Is that, that will be the next neighborhood. Makes some sense to think of as your active streetscape. Now, we're proposing or we're presenting here a couple of options so you can say, well, okay, we see what the applicant has. Are there other ways of thinking about basically the same development in basically the same area? And this first one is a refinement we call option A, which says, what happens if Glover actually is more or less straight south of Raccoon and then makes its bend to cross Raccoon and continues more or less straight north? Next page, please. What that does, okay, so that means, you know, relocating. Damn it, I can't turn it off, sorry. But they'll stop. It's the telemarketers. That gives you the option of having a significant waterside park, Raccoon Park, if you will, between Glover and the southernmost curb building, about an acre and a half park. And that's kind of a nice thing. But it would mean at least relocating the pavement of Glover. My apologies. That's what working from home does. And you're happy to know that the mayor is once again calling. I wish I could turn it off, but I can't. That worked. Okay, good. Thinking, okay, so you have an acre and a half park. That's a real benefit. And the other thing that we think is key to focus on, and the graphics at least, of what you're, what the applicant presented are not as clear this way, is to say, what exactly is the key area that you want to be the active streetscape with that active, open, pedestrian-oriented, pedestrian-inviting, landscaped, bike-friendly, all those things? And so that's that bold burnt red line that says, okay, that really is your neighborhood center. That frontage, what happens behind that, what happens above that is private space, but that's your public space. And that's what you want to focus on. And it wants to have very small gaps in it, with the exception of Station Square. Want to make sure that it's, they're tight. So go to the next page, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me add, we thought one of the real potential strengths of the master plan proposal that we've seen is the complementary nature of the station square and park, a badly needed park in this area along Raccoon Creek. And the options that Bob is describing, the details are not particularly important. But the goal of enhancing that presence of two significant new public spaces along Glover Avenue, the station square and the park, we thought was a potential big win for this project. I have to add that with thirteen hundred new units, let's say over a ten-year period, as Bob says, more than doubling the unit count currently, and add in all the daytime office workers who come back here after COVID. The need for public space and particularly landscaped open space is really a major issue and could be another way that this project provides a new neighborhood identity and center.
Hey, thank you, Alan. And the person who has the cursor arrow, controls the cursor arrow, move the arrow for a second, so I know you're listening. There's the arrow, okay, go to the lower left-hand corner of the plan. Okay, now go up just above that, there's a little white building. No, you didn't need to, okay, there's a little white building above building one-one. That is the property that you're currently not being asked to rezone. But it's of no different character than all of the pieces that you are being asked to rezone. And at some point, it probably wants to be the same kind of stuff that's the stuff that is being proposed here. So our suggestion would be, you might want to include that. Okay, so we go back now and go to the next page, page thirteen. Knowing that moving roadways is always something that people say, do we really have to do that? Came up with a section, second option that does a similar thing. Here, we say, well, let's, let's suppose that that bend in Glover represents, as, as we were saying, the terminus of your neighborhood downtown, and that maybe that should be reflected in the building form, again, the active pedestrian zone following closely and evenly the curb line of Glover. And so maybe you could have something that would kind of look like that. It would give you, in the second image, a comparable parking plinth area. Not going to say it's identical, but it's comparable. And in the third one, Raccoon Stream Park could become three and a half acres. And that's a significant area in a, in a neighborhood that really doesn't have public open space that you just kind of want to sit in or explore. So we think that that, that has some real opportunities to be considered, and then if you go to the next page, what that also recognizes is that there are two sightlines, one coming up south, the view north along Glover, and then the view south along Glover, and they kind of converge on this point. So this is a marker point, as we show in the bottom, lower plan. Said, this is where something that you could say, yes, this is how, this is where the neighborhood center is. This is what we're moving towards, and when you've come there, you know you've arrived. That's a pretty positive thing. You could think of, a lot of building plans, or a lot of, a lot of city plans that do this quite successfully. And actually, if you, for those of you who have gone, gone in Farmington, I believe it is, there is an amazing church, happens to be Latter Day Saints Church, that is located right at the bend of a major highway, and you can see it from, because they, they have a very nice steeple, you can see it from five miles away. That's like, wow, I want to be at that point, because that point looks special. That's, that's a good thing to create. So at the bottom there, you're seeing Glover, in the, the curb is to your left, we're looking south, and that's where you would see something, whatever it is, that if you, if you chose to go this way, that might be the, the town center, the symbol of the town center, if you will, of this area. Next page. The neck, there we go, coming up. Alan, you want to start getting us into it?
Well, all this says is that there are a variety of ways of redistributing as the design for the project develops. The same density over the site. And that a bit of variety in the massing of the buildings, so that, as we said earlier, they don't simply reproduce the uniform skyline of the current developments on the site, but give a livelier visual aspect could be a way to go. Given the size of the proposed new development, to simply have a series of slabs on parking podium is probably, given what's there already, as Bob has said, not the way to consider developing the design. And what we say and illustrate in this section is the two slabs that are currently more or less the same in their massing could be more differentiated.
So for example, here you're seeing, again, another proposal for another project, but it shows an interesting idea that on one parking podium, you can have a tower and a slab, have them different heights, and have an active streetscape that masks the podium. And that seems to be a good way of going, if you just keep images like this in mind of what you could have. It probably gives you more of an idea of the potential of the applicant's plan. Go to the next page.
Nick, did you want to comment?
Sorry.
unmute yourself, Nick.
Sorry, on the previous page where you showed the three and a half acre example, do you achieve that by making that building that is now that beige more dense? Because you're covering what was originally a building there, are you just like squeezing it all into a smaller square footage?
I, well, we haven't tried, I mean, you know, we, we have, we don't have a, a, how do I put this, we have a computer print that we're not going to try to scale, but visually, it looks like that beige area is about the area of the equivalent area of the podium of the two buildings that were proposed.
Gotcha.
And we're not trying to redesign this, but we're just saying, well, one part of that podium could have a tower on it, the other could have a shorter building that maybe is longer. One thing that also I think is important here, and you don't really get the feeling from these plans, but if you were to look at the, the Google Earth view, is all up at the, well, actually, okay, you do, I'm sorry. So if you look where the, where the little red dashed arrow is, you're seeing where all of the condominiums are. It's really going to be important, I think, to those people, that they feel that they're, they're still retaining some of their views. Obviously, building buildings up is not, is going to block to some extent the views, but to the, to the extent that above the podium, you can have, and it's the podium, really, and that, that solid burnt red line that's defining the streetscape. So what happens above that, you could be much more flexible about. And the idea that keeping as many view corridors open to those, those current residents, I think would be a positive thing to pursue.
Thank you, that's helpful.
That help you?
Um, one of the things I, I haven't seen you opine on is the scale and density of the development itself.
Okay, well, let's, the last page, we've got a statistics, statistics are boring, but they're important. I think the amount of development is probably not inappropriate, but we'll go back to that. I think that what we're trying to say with, with the varied skyline, and you'll see in this second image here, again, another proposal for a different project, a different area, but, boy, that, that is, has a lot different feeling than, and again, those are all buildings built on a parking podium with a pedestrian active street front. And they're at a, at a pretty today schematic scale, they don't have a lot of the materiality that also makes something like this rich. That will go a long way to making this more interesting. Hate to give you negative images of some of, if you have just two slabs that are exactly the same height. I think back in the old days, if you used to go down the Bronx River Parkway, you saw a lot of those. And they weren't probably places that you'd be really happy with in Norwalk. But let's just see where we are here. Okay, go on to the last page, because there we've got area statistics, so go back to those statistics. And what, what you see here, this is different than height. Mr. Chairman, were you the, I didn't see the talking voice, but I think it was you that was asking.
It was.
Okay, I recognize the voice, that's a start. Okay, so, so here we go, with North Seven, you will have 5.3 million square feet, plus or minus, a built area in this study area, in this neighborhood center. And it will be generally about, about fifty-fifty office and residential. I don't know what the proper distribution is, but right now, without North Seven, it's much heavier to office. And I think that adding this much residential, aside from traffic, of course, we're not talking about traffic, but adding this much residential is an asset to the neighborhood and presumably to the city also. It's consistent with the plan for comprehensive development that you have, and the applicant's study of that points it out in greater detail than, than we are going into here. But Paladae and Fitzgerald's review says that it's consistent, so I think that's, that's very good. Where you're, as far as the heights go, I'm not, and I'm not even sure that Alan and I feel exactly the same on this, but again, when, when you realize that these buildings, especially south of Raccoon, are in the lowest area, more height is not necessarily a bad thing. Probably from the street level of Glover to the top of a Merritt Seven building, it might be a hundred and ten feet. Could be a hundred twenty, but it's something on that order. So they're, they're tall, which is to say, if you don't want to see these buildings, you don't make them taller than that. But I think that you have an opportunity with these buildings, as, as we've said, to create a little bit of a skyline, a little bit of an interest. I don't think, I hope nobody here has, was the designer for Merritt Seven, but I don't think that people are really saying, boy, Merritt Seven is the most interesting skyline we've ever seen. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
So I think you have the opportunity, and hopefully in a, in a subsequent stage, maybe it's doing the design guidelines, the idea of various heights can be explored. But I wouldn't be afraid of heights, I wouldn't be afraid of the density, or we wouldn't, I should say. Where you are deficient is in retail, and I say retail, restaurants, all of that sort of active space that makes a street worth walking. It's 2.1% of North Seven, which is a very small number. And as the whole neighborhood center, to have half a percent is a very small number. Now, we don't, we haven't had the ability to give you multiple examples of what would be right, but we were, we did look at one project in Newton, Massachusetts, called Riverside. And Riverside is, Riverside is a isolated, small neighborhood unto itself. It's bounded by an interstate highway on the west, it's bounded by a transit, transit, literally by the, by the subway, the MTA rail yards on the north, on the south, can't remember what it is, but it doesn't have anything around it, so it is a neighborhood. It's about 1.4 million square feet, and it's divided about fifty-fifty between office, retail, and residential. But significantly, it has, well, about two and a half times the retail that North Seven has, and it's only trying to serve the same area, not, it's trying to serve 1.4 million square feet, not 5.3. So we think that a significantly higher percentage in that function would be justified. If you were to, and I know that Steve has proposed some text amendments, which we haven't had a chance to analyze in detail, but I know that he, he has said that, he has proposed a requirement for multiple uses and the percentage of uses, and that seems to be the right direction to go. I think, does, does that answer the question about density, or would you like more expoundation?
It answers my question.
Okay.
So I would just add, these are Brooklyn densities. They're high. If you calculate twenty-six or so hundred units over the whole site, it's rather dense. And I think that kind of density creates lively urban environments. But the big wild card is transit. As currently proposed, this project has a parking ratio of roughly one car per unit. And it's not that reliant, as our report points out, for now at least, on the presence of a new commuter rail station. But it could be, and then it would function more like a real urban center. And less like typical Connecticut-style residential or office development, which you see in Norwalk or Stanford, where each building is on a huge podium of parking.
Let's go to the bottom of this page, just so that we can get to a pause point at least. Please. Bottom of the, yeah, well, there we, okay. Very, very good. Okay, so our conclusion, again, it's in bold. As North Seven, if completed, will be the last significant development in this area. And as it is located as center of what can and ought to be a town center, it is essential and right that Norwalk promulgate development standards that ensure a proper quantity of publicly oriented retail and commercial uses on this site. That's sort of a presentation for Zoom. Are there questions? I'm sorry.
Well, if there are no questions right now, let's turn it over. Rod, I'm sorry.
I am interested in exploring the density issue a little bit further, if that's possible. Because it's obviously going to be an area where the project for the public, or at least I think it will be, will be vulnerable. I mean, the neighborhood immediately to the west is a relatively low-density neighborhood. And, you know, Merritt Seven, although it's immediately to the east, it really isn't part of this neighborhood. I mean, it's divided from it. So I really wonder, and the traffic constraints are huge. You know, going in, as Lou pointed out a couple of meetings ago, there's really two ways into this site, both of which are really difficult. And to hang your hat on a transit district with a Merritt Seven station, I think is kind of difficult at this point. Especially since we have no idea what's going to happen with rail transportation after COVID. And so I think the density issue is something really has to be explored. That's, you know, I'm not against density, as you know, per se. But I'm not sure that this is the place for, you know, this much residential development. And particularly, it looks like, and I don't know whether this is the way it's going to be, but it looks like it's going to be more rental housing. So, you know, it's curb, between curbs and this, it's 2,000 units of rental housing. So. And finally, you know, if we are going to have something approaching that intensity, I really think the public benefits have to be significantly expanded. But I like the ideas of the Glover Street and the public open space. But I think there are other areas of public benefits that we need to explore.
Obviously, this is only a start at coming. And we're not here to, we're neither here to praise Caesar nor to bury him. But that's not the right quote. What I would say is the Comprehensive Development Plan talks about two active centers for Norwalk. And Sono is one, and this is the other. So to that extent, it's saying something should happen here. Is this the right amount of something? It's hard to say. In some ways, your argument.
The difference, though, is that Sono is part of a larger neighborhood. This really isn't part of a larger neighborhood. I mean, it's, to the north, there's really nothing. To the east, there's, you know, Merritt Seven. To the west, there's Route Seven. To the south, there's Merritt Parkway. I mean, it's landlocked. It's really not a neighborhood. So, I mean, it's hard to make a comparative analogy to this in Sono.
Well, Sono is a legitimate downtown as well with somewhat better transit service and access. So it's not a parallel. But you stated the dilemma. Because of the relative isolation of the area, whatever you build has to be of sufficient density to support the amenities which would make this a reasonable place to be and to live and to work. But again, because of that isolation, it's hard to imagine circulation working smoothly and without conflict. And if somebody who didn't know the Danbury Line in its current life looked at this, if I showed this plan to a planner friend of mine in Seattle, say, they would naturally assume that that new transit stop was the key to the whole thing. And we know that it's not yet at that level of service.
Well, I think we need to come back to the issue of traffic and transit. But before we do that, I think we ought to give the developer an opportunity to respond to what we've heard. So David, I turn it over to you for the time being.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Waters, General Counsel of Building and Land Technology, representing the applicant. We just also had a chance to read the report this afternoon and maybe have a chance to meet with Bob and Alan by Zoom. And we're very happy and thankful to be able to do that. And frankly, I think that a lot of the things that they've mentioned are very much consistent with our thoughts on this whole thing and our kind of design pieces of it. You know, one of the things that is not readily apparent from the submissions that we've made thus far is that, for example, the treatment of Glover Avenue, as you know, up at the northern end of it, we've already started with the granite curbs and the wider sidewalks and the decorative lighting and what have you. The master plan does not reflect that that is being carried through as part of the master plan itself, but in fact, it is. That's always been the intention. And so for lack of definition, some of it may have been lost in translation. But we certainly do understand, and that is exactly our thought, is that Glover Avenue becomes the spine and the area of focal interest in the whole area. I think the last point that Alan made, I think, actually is a very important one. As far as the question about density, if you don't have density, you don't have retail. And we can tell you that from down here at Harbor Point, that if you don't have demand for retail, then retail will wither on the vine, and you'll never have, you'll have empty storefronts. So it's all very well and good to say that, well, we should have, you know, more of something or better public amenities. But all you end up with is dead open space and empty storefronts if you don't have enough people to populate the area to make it someplace that's worth being. So that's one point. The second point is that clearly, a lot of the things that we're talking about here have a cost associated with them. And so you've got to be able to figure out how you're going to make that work, too. And the only way to make, you know, to be able to allow for those types of improvements and the maintenance of those types of improvements is to have a supportive tax base, but also to have a supportive property owners association. And the only way you can do that is by being able to make it work financially. The third piece that I would say with respect to that is that I go back to one of our original points, which is the reason that we feel that this amount of residential is important is because it is truly supportive of the economic engine of Norwalk, which is the Merritt Seven and Towers area. We know that one of the reasons that you can't keep a GE in place is because you don't have a live, work, play environment. And we know that there have been a number of corporations that have looked at our buildings and looked at Merritt Seven and have given it a pass because it is more, at this point, of the old version of a corporate office park that's out in the middle of nowhere, as opposed to being something where the employees feel that there's a place for them to live, work, and play that's desirable. So without that, you're, not only will you not attract new business, but you're going to have a hard time maintaining the business that you have. So that was kind of the fundamental thought that we had in the mix of uses and in the kind of density that we were talking about. And I think that what I hear from your consultants is that we're generally on the right track. And the question is, you know, what's the right mix and what have you? We also think that the concept of different variations in height and style of building is something that is certainly worth looking at. We tried to keep it within what we know to be essentially the envelope of what's allowed in the zone right now. So even though we had proposed 15 stories, and the maximum that you're allowed in an executive office zone right now is 12 for a hotel, the reality is that if you measure that hotel from a development park private way, as we know from 901 Merritt Seven, you're actually talking about several stories above that. So we felt that the 15 stories was within the existing realistic envelope that you could have in the executive office zone to begin with, if you want. But we also had suggested that the idea of higher buildings and narrower buildings does create view corridors, and it does create some interest. And that's where we thought that that would be a potential possibility as well. So I think that the flexibility of design is certainly something that we would be interested in and excited about, rather than just a cookie cutter type of proposal. And other than that, I think that, you know, as I said, we've had very little time to review it. But I think that we're fairly consistent with what your consultants have been suggesting as well. And we certainly look forward to continued work on making sure that standards are addressed as well. Especially the idea, it's intriguing, and I don't know, again, we haven't had a chance internally to look at it, but the idea of, you know, a signature building at the bend and then being able to make that into a further focal point for some retail in the base and things like that. It's intriguing, and we certainly would look forward to trying to figure out if that's something that's workable.
Well, going back to this issue of traffic, I don't see how we can move this project forward right now without addressing, at an absolute minimum, the three state projects which are planned in this area. My, from my cursory view, it does not look as if Glover Avenue can handle the traffic that would be generated from these developments without those projects being completed. So the question becomes when and if those projects are going to move forward? And what the relationship then becomes between our permitting the project, whether it's in this form or in an altered form, to go forward relative to those improvements? In fact, if you read what BLT's traffic consultant said, is that in at least one area, we have Level of Service F at the current time. And that with the improvements and the development, we still have Level of Service F. And to me, that doesn't seem acceptable. So we've got, I think, we have big issues with traffic. We need a good deal more input from ConDOT, not only on when are these going to go forward, but if they're going forward, when will they be completed? Because we may need to tie any approvals to those improvements. I'd be interested in what the other commissioners feel about that.
I think a lot of residents, when we do have the public here, would come out and raise a lot of cane about the traffic without knowing when they're going to start it or if they're even going to start the project. People are just going to be very concerned about the traffic that's going to be created. And I mean, it's already problems over there currently. So, I mean, they would just really probably hammer everybody on the traffic.
I mean, you know, the fact is that some of these improvements have been on the books for a very long time, without ConDOT committing dollars or committing to design. Beyond that, at least in the past, and I have 38 years of experience working with ConDOT, both bus and rail divisions. ConDOT has shown no significant interest in improving the quality of service on the Danbury Branch Line. What I mean by that is improving the headways or building the bypasses that would allow for improved service. So again, I think all of those issues we need answers to.
Excuse me. Isn't part of the Walkbridge project improving the Danbury Line? I think we need to understand how much of that, what that really is. That was my understanding, but I have no clear, you know, picture of how much they're going to improve the Danbury Line.
Or what those improvements are going to entail.
Yes, exactly. But I know that there are improvements to the Danbury Line, and that's, you know, a major emphasis of the Walkbridge project, beyond the Walkbridge itself. So I think we need to look at that and understand it.
You know, Galen, ConDOT has set up a Walkbridge office in South Norwalk. I don't know.
Yes, I know, I've seen it.
Would you be interested in going down there and seeing what you can learn about the Danbury Line improvements they're discussing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, terrific. Comments from the other commissioners regarding these issues? David?
So, Mr. Chairman, a few things on that. First of all, one piece of the puzzle that we do absolutely know is that the improvements for the station are currently out to bid. And they plan on starting construction of that this summer. So that's one of your projects. Part of the thing that I will go back and remind you of is of the way that we are proposing this is that when you approve a master plan, it doesn't allow for any construction to commence anyway. We
We still need to come back for each of the buildings, and each of them will require independent review that will include traffic review before we can build anything. So two points to that is if you were to approve this master plan, it doesn't allow for anybody to go in and get a building permit immediately anyway. In fact, it would still require further review by this commission each time we go in for a building, and each time we would then have to address the traffic at that point. On the, on the converse side, if you didn't approve, approve the master plan, and we then said, okay, we've got all this property. What do we do? How do we develop it? We would still have to come into you, whether it's business two or executive office zone, and some of it is already executive office zone. But we would have to come before you, and we would have to do exactly the same analysis for each of the buildings then too. So the, the approval of the master plan really doesn't do anything as it relates to addressing the traffic needs or, or the immediacy of those needs. Because in either case, each of the individual buildings, when they are actually applied for, is what will trigger the need for actual improvements that, that are to be made for, to address the impact of that building. The other piece that I, a second point that I would make about that is that, as people have noted, and it's absolutely true, that there is a problem currently. And while we understand that we can't exacerbate that problem, the, the thought that, okay, now this developer comes along, they should solve that problem that has been a historic problem, is not something that is fair. So we, we suggest that while there is a need for these improvements, the idea that this should then be the trigger that, that allows for somebody else to, to be required to make them, that this should be conditioned upon, is, is really somewhat not fair either. The third thing that I would say about it is that while it is true that ConDOT has not always been particularly easy to deal with or fast to react to the need for things, that part of what we're talking about here again is the economic engine of Norwalk and therefore a Fairfield County. And I suggest that if this is the type of development that would support and enhance that, that that is something that we can then go to the state to, to Weatherfield with and say, look, we, this needs to be addressed. We need to make it a priority to address it because otherwise it doesn't happen. So I think that, you know, it, it's easy to say, well, you know, until the state does something, we're not going to, we don't want to act. But I, I would also suggest that if there is no reason for the state to act because everybody's lived with these conditions for the last 20 years, then you're not giving them a reason why they need to act now anyway. It's not to say they won't in the future, but it's also not a reason for them to look at it with any immediacy. So I think that it, it's somewhat unfair to, to say that, that, you know, this should be something that holds it up. Because frankly, even if they said it's going to be approved, you know, that they're going to move forward next week, or if they were going to say we're moving ahead in 10 years, the approval of the master plan doesn't change what ultimately we would need to address as part of the approval of all of those buildings along the way.
Could I just add something to what David has said? The, if you look at reviving city and town centers in the Northeast, what has made it possible to add all the residential that New Haven and Stamford and even some smaller places like Milford have added is precisely the live, work, play equation that David mentioned earlier. And if we could imagine that a significant quantity of the new residents in this area would actually walk or bike or use transit to get to work and entertainment, it changes the game significantly. And it, for me emphasizes the importance of improving pedestrian connections to the main avenue addresses. Because then to go back to a comment made earlier, it starts to function more like a real neighborhood. So without diminishing the importance of DOT doing their job well, the planning job locally is to enhance all of the connections.
I'm sorry, Galen, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say, yep. Get that. That's true.
Well, I do think we, we, we still need to hear from ConDOT regarding these issues and whether they have a, a schedule for implementing and, and carrying these forward. Clearly they do for the rail station. But I'd like to have a, a conversation with them. And I know Steve tried to get them to attend this evening, and they, they weren't available. But I would like a little more feedback on that. David, I'd also like both the commission and, and of course you and the people you're working with to have more opportunity to digest what the, the reviewers have said and to make alterations to the plan, if, if from your perspective, that makes sense. So I, I, I think what I'm saying is I'm not certain that we're ready for a public hearing in the middle of July. I don't want to unnecessarily hold up action on, on these items. But I do feel that we have to have some additional, additional information. I mean, frankly, on the first item we called here, you know, which is the change in the zoning map, I, that, that is, I think, the least problematic of, of, of the issues. Again, if I could, I'd like a, a sense from the other commissioners, whether you agree that perhaps we need at least one more meeting to discuss this with the consultants, with, with the developer and among ourselves before, before we take this to a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Richard, please.
Yes, I, I would like to answer with what my sense is, but I wanted to ask a, a question if I may. I'm just trying to understand two different things that have been said, one by Attorney Waters and one by the consultant, Alan. I, I really enjoyed the, the discussion of making this a neighborhood. But is the concept that the people that live in there are going to be the only ones there and they're going to stay there? And I'm trying to understand in conjunction with what David had to say about this is a terrible traffic situation and it's unfair for us to have to do anything about it. I, I'm just trying to get it, what that means. All, all those people that are there, are they just going to stay and shop and live and play right in this 16 acres?
No, I think that, you know, my thought on that is that certainly, and, and to say that we're not responsible for any of the improvements is not, is not fair either. That certainly if, if we're adding to the area, then we would expect that there, that we would have to address some of that too. I think the, the concept that we have is that when you have a, a, an environment where there is, where people can work, they can walk to work from their, from their residence, they have a coffee shop or a restaurant or a deli or a dry cleaner location or whatever it is, it means that you have less traffic because they, people can walk to it and they don't have to jump in their car to, to drive off to pick up their, their dry cleaning someplace else. Doesn't mean that they're never leaving that area. In fact, quite the contrary, most people do. They, but it means that when you have that type of an environment as a neighborhood, just as you do in, you know, in, in larger cities, people tend to be able to then stay and, and do a number of things themselves within that neighborhood. And it adds to the value of having those types of conveniences at hand.
David, if I can ask, the 27,000 plus or minus square feet of, of retail, is that intended pretty much exclusively for the residents on Glover? Or are you also thinking of the folks who live in the condominium developments?
We're, we're absolutely thinking about the people that are, the folks that are living up the hill as well. If, if you just were relying upon these buildings on Glover, you probably wouldn't have enough demand to support that retail. The idea is to, again, to make it into something where the people, the folks up the hill have the ability to say, yeah, this is part of my town center as well. And that's the whole point, is to create that sense where they feel that these are all amenities that are open to them too.
Thank you.
I, I would agree with the chair that we probably do need a little more discussion and some more information probably before we head to the public hearing.
And David, I'd also like to make it clear that I wasn't suggesting at all that responsibility for these traffic improvements should, should fall as your BLT's responsibility. These are, these are simply too large, given the size, even, even the large size of the development you're proposing. It seems to me for you to take these on and have a successful development.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just, just one other point. Talking about the office component of the potential demand for the restaurant and, and other type space, the aggregate right now, which is not going to propose to be changed, of about two and a half million square feet. And Dave, you could probably give us a, a better idea of this, but at three employees, three occupants per thousand square feet, that's 7,500 people that are potentially interested in having a place close by where they could get a lunch, where they could drop their dry cleaning, where they could do all of those little things. And if it's four per thousand, you know, then you're 10,000. I, I don't know if those numbers are right. You're in the business, you might have a better idea. But it certainly seems like there's not just the residents that are there, but there are a lot of office people in the daytime that could be looking for something if it was available.
Yeah, that, that's a fair point. It absolutely is. And, and the other thing that, that is not quite, there's, there's a smaller component as well. And that is, up until February, the, the train station itself had a number of people that would commute, generally not from very far, but that would come to that train station to get on the, the branch line to go elsewhere. And, and those are also people that will stop and get a cup of coffee or pick up their dry cleaning on the way home or things like that. So the, it's, it's all of those components. But certainly the office component is one that you would expect that if, if there's a, a restaurant, a small pizza restaurant or, or something of the sort that, that's in this area, that that would also then be something. That, that would also be something that you're going to have people that after work say, let's go grab a beer together or, or, and what have you. And that's the type of thing that we would like to encourage because that is the type of thing that livens up the neighborhood and creates the interest on the street too.
But can I ask one question on that? If, looking at the maps, there's not easy ways for folks in the current office buildings to get onto Glover from the backside, correct?
Not, not pedestrian wise.
Not pedestrian. You would be driving your car up and around and then parking on that side to get to that for any sort of capacity at this point, whether that's a coffee, pizza, anything, right?
As, as of right now, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Right now, you, you could take, if you're standing on the Plaza Deck at Roots at Merritt Seven, you can throw a rock and hit where the platform should be. Get to the platform, it would take you about a mile's walk.
Right. Or you can rappel off down the side.
The, but so, so there are a couple of things. One of them is that there is in fact a, you know, with, with the train station improvements, that'll create one piece of it. Second piece is that with critical mass, it allows you to also do some things that you don't otherwise do. If there's demand for it, there, there's a shuttle that between, that can occur between Merritt Seven and Glover Avenue. It already exists because they run people to the train station and what have you. But when you can have a, a shuttle that may take you from, you know, building one at Merritt Seven, which isn't quite as convenient to the, to the train station overpass as building five, for example, then the idea of having a shuttle that can run you around, especially if you've had a beer or two, too many and are going home, is, is not a bad thing. So there are other ways also of enhancing that connectivity besides the pedestrian physical nature of it too.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. And being that we're in the post-COVID-19 era, a lot of companies are not necessarily opening up new office spaces. A lot of commuters like myself, who lives out in East Norwalk, are no longer commuting into the city for some period of time. Have you gave any consideration of what type of office space is vacant around you? What the demand is? Because my concern is twofold. We build something as beautiful as you're suggesting. And it's one of those, if you build it, they will come. But unfortunately, they don't. And we see in something like in a South Norwalk where it was such a vibrant atmosphere, it's starting to, the numbers are dwindling a little bit. As a guy who just goes there on a, on occasion, I can tell you I see attendance down. No scientific evidence other than me attending, so take that for what it's worth. You see that, and then I, I get a sense if the office isn't there, retail will be very slow to come in. And then you're left with just residential, which puts a huge impact onto our economy as it drains the Board of Education and, and public services. Have you given, long-winded here, but have you given any consideration to post-COVID-19? And after it's built, assuming we get to that place, what is it like to fill?
Yep. Very appropriate and timely questions. And we're working that through with our existing office space here and in Stamford and, and wherever. And, and it is all going to be different. Some of it will be, go back to something that was previous, but a lot of it is going to be very different in the future. And we're still figuring that out ourselves. We do know that there's to some extent been an express demand actually for more office space in Norwalk and in Stamford because some of the places, just like after 9/11, there are like people that just don't want to be in New York. that just don't want to be in New York, where they're in a, you know, 100-story skyscraper. And now how do you get that many people in an elevator at any one time? And, and so there's those types of concerns that are, are encouraging people to work further out from the city. And that's actually generating some, some additional interest that we're seeing right now, including residential as well. On the other hand, uh, you know, you're going to see that people are not really thrilled about the idea of what has classic, we've been moving to of almost five per thousand, as far as, uh, parking is required, because you, the smaller and smaller and smaller cubes, now people realize that living, you know, working on top of each other may not be the best thing either. So, all of that is going to change the dynamic, and not just with COVID, but, you know, five or 10 years from now, there's going to be differences that occur in so many different ways as, as well. It may be, uh, you know, whether it's automated cars, or whether it's, uh, different ways of working, and whether people realize that with, uh, based upon the experience with COVID, that there's, you can do a lot more with telecommuting, uh, and, and not necessarily being in the office. And does that create a different type of office? Because now you've got flex space, that, uh, not everybody is in the office all the time. And when you need to be there, you, uh, you have your locker and, and you move from there. Backset did that, in fact, uh, when they, uh, designed their headquarters at 45 Glover. People have a locker, and then they have a space that they work from. So, all of that's going to change. And that's one of the reasons, in designing the plan the way that we've done, we've kind of made it modular. There are certain things that we know we need to do, like the activation of the street and the retail and what have you. But beyond that, as, as we had kind of explained before, that, um, if, if there's a demand for office, we can take a residential building and, and put it in office building there instead. If there's a demand for a hotel, uh, we can take something, one of the residential buildings, and make it into a hotel instead, as a hotel site. And that's kind of the flexibility that you need to have going forward. If, if we did it all as a snapshot today, uh, it would probably be wrong. But we know that things will change over time. And, and if, if you are carved in stone, uh, that's probably not the best way to do things.
Other questions or comments?
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me?
Steve, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, I'll actually comment first, just the, the map that's up there. Hopefully, it's still, the screen's still visible to everyone. The timelines and durations for the projects are according to DOT. So, the Merritt 7 interchanges are, you know, they're, they're in design phase and the final design phase now. They don't anticipate construction until 2025, and they anticipate those taking about three years. So, that includes the Merritt 7 interchange, the Merritt Main Ave interchange, as well as the replacement of the Glover Avenue Bridge. So, those three projects are, you know, they'll help things. But again, those are five years away and a three-year duration to complete. The, uh, maybe the most significant project to this proposal is the Griss Mill Connector, you know, how that gets realigned. And there's really not even a design yet. There's, there's been some, uh, concepts discussed, but it's not really on the radar. So, I don't know how long that would take to complete, if and when that will happen. So, that, I think that's a discussion that needs to happen as, as part of this process. A question I had, I don't know if it's best answered by, um, you know, the, the traffic consultant, would be, it is more of a theoretical question, and I, I kind of posed it to the commission in the email. Considering that the level of service now at many of these intersections is, is F, which is kind of on our scale would be unacceptable, and under the, you know, the state's build conditions, it still remain an F. And that, considering that doesn't factor in what's being contemplated as part of this application, is there any way that the zoning commission could even approve an application without these road improvements happening? That's the, that's kind of where I'm stuck at the moment.
Well, I'll, I'll start with the, the answer, and then, and our traffic consultant is part of, of this, uh, meeting. But, again, you can approve the master plan, and, and we still wouldn't be able to build anything. So, how you, so, saying, well, how can we approve this when those aren't under, under consideration? The answer is, we may have a master plan that gets approved, but until there is actually a determination as to how some of these things are going to be addressed, we would not be able to take the next step to actually make an application for site plan review, uh, to, to actually build a building. So, so Craig Yanis is on, uh, is participating as part of the call tonight. Uh, and he's with Tiger Bond and is our traffic consultant. And Craig, if you have anything that you'd like to add to that, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Uh, I don't really have too much to add, uh, to that. I mean, that's kind of the, the gist of the argument here, is how we move forward with the traffic analysis. You know, talked a lot, a lot today here about the impacts of COVID and what's going to happen in the future. We don't, we don't have a good sense. And, uh, the, the longer we wait, the better, the more information we have, the better. So, a lot of these improvements will come to fruition, um, you know, as we get further down the process. The other portion about the analysis, I want to point out that, so essentially, that's looking five years out from now, 2025, with no improvements being done, just general traffic growth in the area. As you guys mentioned, nothing, uh, of the development here has been added. And, uh, obviously, just like there is today, there are issues with the level of service and some queuing issues as well. Uh, so, we're not, we're not hiding from that fact at all. Um, and I think that many of these improvements will have a great impact, uh, once they are online, to fix the existing issues, as well as provide capacity for, uh, new development, including this development here. So, that's pretty much all I can say at this moment, moment in time, in relation to these things.
Uh, any other comments from the commission, the consultants, or the staff? Uh, if not, um, Steve, um, it, it, it certainly seems clear to me that we, we need at least one more meeting on this. We need, um, uh, to engage our own, um, traffic engineers, uh, through our consulting firm, so that, so that we, we, um, we, we get our own voice on this issue. Uh, in terms of scheduling, where does that leave us?
Um, I, I, to be honest, I have not looked at the clock. I know there were some, um, amendments that the governor put through as part of COVID regarding applications and kind of throwing timelines out the window. So, we, we're probably okay, but I, I have to circle back and maybe have an offline conversation with Dave about that. The question then is, when do we want to meet to discuss this item again? Your next meeting, I believe, is July 15. That's, there's, I think there's four applications, maybe five on that night. So, it's a question of, do we want to tack this item onto that agenda and just go for a longer? I mean, we could, I just mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, do we want to think about starting earl, uh, later than, um, 6? But I mean, we could start again at 6 with this item, and proceed for, have an hour, hour and a half discussions. And then, you know, you might be there till 9, 10 o'clock with all the other items on the agenda. So, just something to think about.
Why don't, um, why don't you and I speak, uh, tomorrow or the next day? And, um, uh, we'll see if we can, we can come up with some dates, in, in order to, to keep this moving, but als, also in order to get, uh, the additional information that we need. I think it might also make sense, again, let's talk about this after we, we finish our business here. But, uh, something as simple as a doodle poll for, um, uh, the commissioners to find out, uh, what meeting time works best for the largest number of, of commissioners. All right, now, we discussed basically A, B, and C. It seems to me, all under, uh, Item A. Is there any disagreement on that?
Oh.
Okay, then, then I think we can, for the time being, close out, close out these items and, uh, uh, continue with the rest of the agenda, which is fairly light. So, I thank, uh, Bob and, uh, Alan, um, for, for the work you've done. And we'll look forward to talking to you again. David, thank you as well.
My pleasure, and thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Uh, okay, uh, we're at Item 4, which is, uh, the zoning regulation RFP. Uh, I don't know about anybody else. I had only minor comments, and I've already shared those with, um, with Stephen. Other comments, recommendations, suggestions from any of the other commission members regarding the RFP?
Um, I, I reviewed it, and I, I felt all was well.
The, the one substantive suggestion, um, I made is that, uh, we start adding, and, uh, th- this would be the first project, adding in a DBE requirement. That's a disadvantaged business enterprise, uh, which is to encourage minority and female-owned businesses, uh, to participate. The consultant we'd be hiring for, for this job will certainly be familiar with a, a modest, um, a DBE requirement of perhaps 10%. And, um, I, th- th- this is something which I think, uh, this day and age is, is important. I can tell you that, uh, for any projects that are funded with federal dollars, it's actually, uh, a requirement. So, uh, my, my other edits were, were very, very minor. So, uh, Steve, whenever you're ready, um, um, I, I think you can move this forward.
Yeah, I haven't discussed it with Sharon Connors and Purchasing yet, because I wanted to take your concept. And I'm assuming they have that language they've used elsewhere. So, I'll, uh, email her tomorrow, and then once she has that together, I'll, I'll send it out to you guys to make sure that's what you were aiming for. And then we can hopefully issue it sometime early, mid-July at the latest, that would be good. And then we could start getting somebody in here by September and get, get moving on it.
That sounds great.
Can I ask a question on the DBE? I love the fact that, Lou, I think your suggestion is spot on. I love it. In fact, I would argue that the percentage goes higher. Well, my question is, if it's an absolute requirement, how do we verify that the subcontractors are picked because they're best in breed versus they hold some kind of, some kind of DBE status that maybe another business doesn't have? How do we vet that, the subcontractors? And again, I think this is the right environment. I think your suggestion is spot on, I fully support it. But how do we do the vetting process to make sure we're getting the best candidates possible to work on our job?
Well, typically, when, when you have a DBE requirement, you also have something in the grading of the, th- this is actually not an RFP as much as an RFQ, a request for qualifications. Typically, you'll have, eh, you know, if, if you're working on a 100, a scale of 100, you might have five points or 10 points, uh, for appropriate, uh, for someone meeting the, uh, DBE goal appropriately. So, it's, it, it has a, there's a role for it to play in making your decision. But it's, it's, uh, it's not a controlling role. I mean, I've awarded contracts in the past, frankly, to, uh, firms that have come in and said, "We could not find an appropriate DBE contractor to work with on this project." Uh, and that, and those were jobs that had DBE requirements. It seems to me you're always looking, uh, with an RFQ for the firm that comes in with the, with the strongest proposal. Regardless of, of, you don't ignore the DBE. But as I said, it, um, it, it only has a fairly modest impact, uh, on, uh, the determination of which firm to, to hire. And again, all of the, any, a firm of any size, uh, has experience with integrating DBE, uh, services into their contract. Whether, uh, they literally integrate them into their own staff, or they use them for some special service, uh, where reports are involved. Sometimes, uh, you use a DBE firm to actually, uh, type and put the reports together. Uh, in, in other cases, they're integral to the, uh, to the, uh, project itself.
One thing I think, too, there's going to be, considering the, the scope of the rewrite, there's going to be different phases of the project that some firms may need help with. And maybe there's a public engagement process that they want, that's not their specialty, and they have to bring in a sub to partner with. So, maybe that's where it's handled, or, or something along those lines.
Well, one of the contractors that David, uh, has used is a DBE firm. It's a woman-owned, uh, engineering firm. And with, with, uh, a, a really excellent, uh, reputation. Probably not, uh, appropriate to be involved in, in this particular study. Next item is approval of the minutes of our last, last meeting. That was, uh, June 17th. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Frank moves, second.
Second.
Okay, and Michael seconds. Steve, you want to do this by polling?
For the minutes?
Yeah.
Mr. Showman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena? Is that a thumbs up for a yes?
Dick, you're, you're muted.
Sorry, uh, I'm abstaining, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, but he's also muted.
I forgot to unmute him.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Kanter? Thumbs up for Mr. Kanter, we'll take that as a yes. Mr. Mancini? Mr. Mancini?
Approved.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay, um, comments of the director?
Uh, nothing further.
Well, do you want to discuss, um, uh, meeting times?
Oh, sure, yeah, so, we kind of did a little bit. So, you have your meeting on July 15th. There's, Ryan and I were going over the agenda earlier today. I think there's four or five items, two or three are public hearings, or some.
They got two, and they're, one of them's probably going to be a pretty long, the 310 Wilson might be a, a longer one if Village Creek comes out.
Right.
Yeah, so that's the question, if we want to try to do a, a special meeting, or jam them on and just do one long meeting? So, that's, I guess, the big thing to think about. I think the good thing, the city purchased an additional Zoom license, so we can actually have three meetings going on at the same time. So, you, I think you'll be back to a two-meeting schedule in August.
Okay.
So, I think we can do that August, I, I don't know if it's the 4th or whatever it is, the first Thursday, as you normally would. So, we could go ahead and have that meeting. That might be a little long to push out the BLT project, though. So, it's a question of, do you try to squeeze another meeting in between the 15th and that first Thursday? Or do we just do a really long meeting that is Wednesday, the 15th?
What's the rush on the BLT project?
I don't think there's a rush. I mean, but I'm just thinking about where we are now, because you're going to have to hold a public hearing. And the public hearing is going to take probably three weeks out from your, where you finally decide it's ready. So, say you looked at it, the 15th, you're probably not doing the public hearing on that till mid-August. And it's not going to get decided in one night. So, you're, you're well into September already with that. So, it's, I don't think it's on any kind of. So it's, I don't think it's on any kind of fast track.
Do you think the 15th is enough time for them to rework plans or things of that nature?
I don't think they're going to come back with, I think they'll have a response to the recommendations that the peer review consultant had. I think it's important for you guys to remember, you know, I don't want to talk too much about the application since we're off of it, but you guys are really in the driver's seat on this, so you know, you're bound, you're not bound by anything to approve it, there's not. In some instances, in other municipalities with certain applications, they have a hammer over you, if you don't approve it, we'll do this. But you're in a position where you can say yes or no based on the items in the record and based on the standards that are in your regulations. So as long as you do that, you're fine, so you're not under any pressure to approve or move anything on this, and as long as we work within the timeframes in the regulations.
Well, I would like to hear from an independent traffic consultant on this. I mean, I think, I think it's important, Michael, Michael's absolutely right. The community's going to come out, again, you know, there'll be those folks who, we've heard from every time housing comes up, that, you know, there are already too many apartments in Norwalk. But I, I mean, I, I saw the letters that we received. It was clear from the letters that nobody had actually read the materials. They were just, they're reacting. I mean, I would hope we'd get more thoughtful comments from the public when we go to public hearing. Nonetheless, I think we need more information before we can give, give BLT a fair hearing.
So should we, can we do another special meeting just for them?
That's an option, so there, there's really three options. You do the, you jam it in onto the 15th, you do a special meeting, or you just tell them the first meeting in August is the BLT meeting. That, that's another option, keep your regular meeting you have for that, that night, and then devote it to BLT, and you could also always put in something else on the agenda if it's a smaller matter.
I don't like the idea of trying to jam it into the July 15th meeting.
Yeah.
So the question becomes, what is fairer to them? To hold an additional meeting before the August meeting, or to wait until the August meeting?
I can email David Waters tomorrow and ask him, say, here's the options, I mean, see what works.
Okay, why don't, why don't, why don't we do that?
And then one question I had, and I don't know if this is more to Steve or not, but in thinking of this project, it seems like there's a lot of dependencies of, of other, other sites, other, you know, whether it's the DOT, whether it's the, the school system, whether it's just the whole, the whole town and a completeness factor, and what sort of leverage is there to like, get, I want to say get people to work together, that's the wrong word, but like, for something like this to be successful, it's creating different, you know, potential road or pass, passageways for pedestrians, or actually fixing the, the roads or whatnot, is there any sort of leverage that we have on that, or is it just more of a the collective noise once that actually occurs?
Without going into much detail, I think the applicant would have some leverage on a political scale.
Gotcha, okay.
What, what kind of notification would be given to neighbors, to the neighbors, especially within that whole neighborhood?
Yeah, so for when the actuals, so when the public hearing date is set, they're going to have to notify all the abutters again. And I'd have to look at the properties themselves to see how many of those condominium complexes are actual abutters to this proposal. We'd have to check that and make sure that they, we were in agreement with, with the applicant on who was being notified.
Well, I mean, the, the, it seems to me the, the applicant is willing to accommodate us. It, it seems to me, if, if we could get them to do a mailing to all of Oakwood as well as just the abutting properties, that, that would maximize the input that we get.
I think that's a good idea.
I mean, just, just, just as, as Attorney Sachi, you know, has agreed to notify Village Creek about the hearing at 310.
There are a lot of condo complexes up there.
Yeah, there certainly are.
Yeah, seven or eight, maybe.
And now I have to go look for Raccoon Creek.
Very good.
Okay, so let's get out a doodle poll. You might want to have a conversation with Stephanie, I mean, my guess is that between now and the election, she's not going to be very reliable, because she's going to be so busy campaigning.
I'd personally vote for 6 o'clock. You know, the earlier we start, the earlier we finish.
You know, for someone who's home, that's not an issue for me, but Frank, Frank may have to start commuting into, into New York City, and 6 o'clock might not work for him.
Well, I don't start going back until Labor Day, but, but the work day has returned, and getting off anything like 6:00 is tough. If you do later, great, if not, I am a team player and will make do.
Okay, so again, I think a doodle poll makes, makes sense, it's quick and dirty, and we, we should be able to make a decision based on, on what we hear from the commission members. Comments from the commissioners? Clearly, clearly this BLT project is, is going to test us all. Very, very complex. It's going to have a tremendous impact. And we're going to have to be very thoughtful about how we approach it. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay, Frank moved. Nick, was that you?
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, Michael seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you, stay healthy.
Good night, guys, nice seeing everybody.